This meeting is called to order at 6:04 PM November the 9th, 2015. I'd like to rise for our prayer.
Shall we pray? Our Father, we thank you for the privilege we have of being here tonight. Lord, we pray that you just lead and guide in these proceedings. Help us to do those things beneficial to our community as a whole, to our citizens individually. Our Lord, we do know that you tell us in your word that ministers, government ministers are ministers of yours for good. So help us, Lord, to do those things which are good for those people that we represent. And in so doing, help us to be pleasing in thy sight. Now forgive us where we've sinned, where we've failed you. Bless our lives through your service, for we ask it in Jesus' name and for his sake. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Joey McCarthy.
Here.
Brandon Thomas.
Here.
Rick Jordan.
Here.
Tom Brandon Burden.
Here.
Amanda Willows.
Here.
Let's record show all members present, also President Mayor Clark Fattan, and Karen Huddings to the Secretary of State. Take it in.
Now, open the first public hearing, item number seven. Consider a recommendation regarding a replat of Lot 2 and Lot 3, Block A of the Watson addition by Joanna Patterson Teckel, developer. No one here going to close the meeting, the hearing. I'm going to move to item eight, a public, open a public, huh? Want to take action on the, okay. Want to take action on item number seven.
Mayor, this item was approved unanimously, I understand, by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So I make a motion that we approve the recommendation regarding replat, the final plat of Lot 2, Lot 3, Block A of the Watson addition by Joanna Patterson Teckel, the developer. I'll say it.
We have a motion by Councilmember Jordan to approve the replat, seconded by Councilmember McCarthy. All in favor? Uh-huh. They closing the public hearing on the replat for Joanna Patterson Teckel. Open a public hearing, number item eight. Consider a recommendation regarding the final plat of Lot 19, Block E, and Lot 10, Block C of Wellington Point Phase 4C by Roger Price, owner developer.
Again, Mayor, this was approved unanimously by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So I make a motion that we approve the recommendation regarding the final plat of Lot 19, Block E, Lot 10, Block C of Wellington Point Phase 4C by Roger Price, owner developer.
I'll second.
We have a, again, we have a motion to approve the replat for developer Roger Price, seconded by Councilmember Thomas. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Going to close the public hearing on item eight at this time. Item nine, business discussed, take action on A, Resolution 2015-11-9 regarding a contract for the purpose of financing a water meter project.
It's just a formality to move forward. The contract has been reviewed by the attorney since everything's in order, and then this is just to move forward with financing that was approved at the October meeting.
Spare, I make a motion, we approve the resolution 2015-11-9 regarding a contract for the purpose of financing a water meter project. I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilmember McCarthy to approve the resolution regarding a contract for the purpose of financing water meter project, seconded by Councilmember Thomas. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Item B, opening a checking account for the Union Grove Cemetery.
Did I see right, we got the survey done for this?
That's later in the update. Yes, the survey is completed. This is a requirement to have the checking account. We want to go ahead, what I'm asking is for the city to open under the same EIN number, just have another checking account for Union Grove Cemetery. And then the bank needs this action taken at the council meeting in order to do that.
I've got, I mean, this may be on item J, I see where we got, we can discuss the ownership and maintenance of that. Can I ask a question about J during B?
Do you want to read J too, doing them both at the same time?
Yeah, we can read, we can do them together.
Can we do them together?
So go ahead.
We're going to open item J on the same guideline, update on ownership and maintenance of the Union Grove Cemetery.
I was with, Mr. Mayor, with J came the plat, or came the survey for that, but it didn't, I didn't see where that, that road that goes between the church and the cemetery, is that an easement or is that part of the cemetery, or is it part of the church, or do we know?
I don't know.
Talking about to the north side.
It doesn't show the road, it doesn't show the road that kind of goes in there, because there's one road that drives.
There's a horseshoe.
Because there's a horseshoe.
But if the church shuts that off, then we won't have access from Lamar and Anderson. But I don't know about from Jamar, because that's part of that driveway. We won't be able to access the whole cemetery.
There's no, there's an access at the very north corner on Jamar Street.
It goes around.
And then there's another access on Sugar Hill. Actually, there's two.
I'm not sure the access, access from Jamar just goes straight east and west. It doesn't cut up.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it does, but I mean, there's still access.
Yeah, but if that private drive is owned by the, if that whole drive is owned by the church.
Yeah, this, their, their drive would be here. On it.
I don't, I don't, that's, I don't.
Because if you look right here, where this lot right here is, this house, the church sits back further north.
But there's only one driveway that goes east to west back there.
Well, off of, off of, for the church lot.
From Anderson to Jamar. If they shut that off and control it, we won't have.
Sugar Hill.
Yes, I'm sorry, Sugar Hill to Jamar. And if that's correctly, then the church owns it? Because I remember seeing a sign years ago that said private drive.
Yeah. But if, but if you look the way it's set up, there's, this goes in and it starts, this one goes in next to horseshoe.
Are you talking about down on the south and southeast corner there in the cemetery? They're off of Sugar Hill. Well, it comes in off Sugar Hill and then it goes back off the highway there.
Yeah, Sugar Hill right back to 82. Yeah, it just goes, it just horseshoes kind of just right there.
Oh yeah, or it comes back this way.
Yes. Now, is it something that we need to get like an easement from the church to say we can use that for the access to the cemetery?
Yeah, it would probably be something, a good question, yes.
Or, I mean, does the church own, is that, does the church own that drive?
Or is it a right of way through there?
For the cemetery to own it?
Yeah.
But the survey would clear on that drive back there. And that's the only, I mean, since we've got the survey, I'm good with all of that. But I just saw that it doesn't really state, even in the wording, that that driveway is included for the cemetery.
Okay.
As far as, as far as access exclusive. Because there's not anything to get from either Sugar Hill, Jamar, or Lamar to the northern part of that cemetery. Other than from Sugar Hill or Jamar. Sugar Hill or Jamar.
Just because it's always been that way doesn't mean that something might happen in the future that it isn't that way.
Or they can shut it off with signs again, say private drive. Would we have the right to really corner and access that?
I need to look, remember when we talked about cemeteries before? I had found a law about they can't deny access to a public cemetery, but I don't have that with me.
But you, but you have access.
Yeah, but yeah, like you said, you have access to two major roadways. You just don't have a cut. And it's very, I mean, it's, it's very usable now and convenient, but what if they shut it off?
But I, really, if it is owned by the church, they can give us, you know, right of way, they've had it for, for 40 years now that I've known, that I've paid attention, it's been used for funerals and access.
Made for parking.
Well, parking, what else would you use it for besides just parking?
Access. For them to go in to bury and to throw equipment to go in and.
Oh, to cut across and to do whatever, okay.
Yeah, because a lot of it would be closer to go in that way than to come in from the highway. I mean, you'd have to have access back there, because you wouldn't want to go, there is real way to get across there.
Real convenient, as it is now. So would that be an easement they'd have to give us if they do own that?
I would think that there would be, yeah, it'd be something that we could do, some kind of agreement. Draw up an agreement between us and them, but the first thing would be to find out if there's already something in there that it's just kind of public and they don't, we don't, and it's just kind of been in there, or if it's in their, you know, survey that they do own it, then yeah, there'd have to be an easement of some of them. Kind of like the road going into the water tower, you know, they still know that we have access to it.
Because something tells me the church would want one way in, one way out, but they're parked on.
Well, certainly, yeah, they want access on both.
That's the only access they have.
Both roads, yeah.
But I don't know about from Jamar, but I know definitely from Sugar Hill.
And even when you have a large funeral, even with access using that parking, there's still times when up and down Sugar Hill, you've got parking and, you know, Jamar and all. Which Jamar is better to park on than certainly Sugar Hill. But it can be a real congested area sometimes.
And the note mentioned that they had a CD to mature.
Yes.
How much was that?
That's the one that they have, about $80,000 up there. And I talked to about 80,000.
Eight.
Eighty?
Eighty.
Eighty. I talked to him today and add to matures this week, and they're just, I said, the best thing for them to do is just to put it into their checking account. Then when we open up this account, we'll just move all the funds that wants. And then if we want to go out and do a sit or do something else with the money, then we can, but they're just going to cash it in, put it in there, and then it'll be one transfer over.
So they're all, they're lined out to do that.
As soon as I get these minutes with the approval to open up that checking account, then I'll go down there tomorrow and start that process. And then they're also going to close out their safe deposit box and move everything over.
So we get the contents of that?
I hope there's quite a bit, but he didn't seem to have the rest.
What about the maintenance? It's on here.
Well, that was just kind of the update on, that was just the same wording that was on there before. The people that are maintaining it have contacted the city and still want to maintain it.
How much was it?
$300 a month.
And that's morning, I mean, just weed eating, I guess?
They weed eat and mow, yeah, whatever, yeah, just whatever.
Limb pick up and all.
Yeah, they clean up all the limbs and.
That's for 12 months.
Now.
$300 a month.
Can we, can, I mean, it's, it's reasonable, but can we do that without bid?
Yeah, because for as little, but we're going to make sure, I want to check and make sure, it might be something we'll have to put in with all of ours, but that was some of the question that we raised when I went down and met with the people in Overton. And that was one, about going out to bid to make sure that.
So we're here to keep the current vendor for that?
Well, until we find out different, but I'm going to find out. I mean, I don't know for sure.
So they complain, it's because they can get.
I think that is.
Because our bid is the city-owned stuff.
Mm-hmm.
So it would have to go out.
Yeah.
Did we tell people okay or?
Haven't told them anything. I told them that I would let the council know that they were interested, you know, in doing it, and then to just keep doing until they hear differently, you know, until we get everything taken over.
Either we approve them to do it or someone else.
Because I know there are, I can't imagine that they would do that for 300.
I can't imagine anyone doing that for 300.
And we have everything in our bid specifically, and we have everything in our bid for lawn care, specifically each place spelled out, so it didn't just blanket it city-owned, it's every place, and they bid, they break that bid down separately and bid for each place. So I don't know, even if you went out and you bid, and somebody bid that cheaper on that, you could probably split it up and have, you know, these by these people and this by a different vendor, so.
Right.
For the cost of it, but it's just, this is all new, the cemetery has done this.
I'd hate to see them lose it, I mean, when they came and asked to do, and they've always done it, and they know. And I'm sure they do it with care, too.
Done a good job.
Always looks nice.
Always nice. For 300, they do a good job. Yeah.
The only time it ever looks grown up in is when it's water is standing and they can't get in.
Yeah, they keep it looking, which does a lot for the city, too.
It does.
I mean, as far as being a cemetery, I mean, they really keep it, if don't anybody else around, it look good.
Well, they probably put a little around it for the lawn.
Now those markers, yeah.
Well, I will find out. Sure what we have to do.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I will find out.
Well, I'm sure whoever bids the city contract after more would have a problem. I mean, you can't hardly get a mower in there, that looks like all weedy.
Well, they're rounded up. Just that one section that's out there in that horseshoe that's pretty, you know, it's still why don't we get out there and mow that, but the rest of it.
So is it something that we can decide on as a council to say they can have?
They still have to go out for bid.
I was going to say, can I check into it? Yes, I will check into it, we'll have it open next to make sure, because we'll have an update, because by next month, we should have all the money transferred, we should have, you know, more stuff going on, so we'll definitely find out.
And to be honest, I think if they go out for bid, I think they say get it.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, they would definitely say get it.
But for the cost of it, because for the bid, I don't.
Jerry, in y'all's spare time, you could.
Jerry, who?
What are you looking back up for?
Because I know you're looking at me.
They've got it down to the door.
Yeah.
You got a push mower out there, don't you?
You're fixing not to have anything hardly to do, because meters are going to be red.
Exactly.
You have all this time on your hands.
After while, they will.
You can do it cheaper.
Yeah, he says pay me an extra 300 a month.
You'll pay the extra 300. Get all your people to check in.
If we can't, if we leave it likely to be as a mispurchase as it is, I think.
Do we have a motion on B?
I move to go ahead and do what's necessary to open a checking account for the Union Grove Cemetery at Lamar National Bank.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Councilmember Thomas to open a checking account for Union Grove Cemetery at Lamar National Bank and Arena, seconded by Councilmember Amanda Willows. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
All opposed? Move on to item C, bids for drainage and curb repair for parts of Nicole Drive, Sleepy Hollow, and Wood Creek.
These are just drainage bids, maybe curb repair and concrete street repairs, these are some that I either have complaints or I have work orders on, but just some I'd like to give them before the winter time shows, to make up for what we've had. I did receive bids, the bids I did receive with the Drakes, overall bid was cheaper. Straight commission recommended we go with bid for this construction.
So you gone out and looked, not going to be a big mess like it was, the grades are good and.
Yeah, we won't have to go back and cut it in. Definitely will have to make sure.
Yeah, good. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we approve the bids for drainage and curb repair for parts of Nicole Drive, Sleepy Hollow, and Wood Creek from Richard Drake Construction.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember McCarthy to approve the repair of the drainage ditches and street by Richard Drake Construction, seconded by Councilmember Jordan. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Item D, firearms at court offices and concealed carry licensed handguns at governmental meetings.
What a mess.
As we all know, Texas passed open carry law, I think in January, 2016. Some of this is covered in state law already. Best I've been able to find out, two different legal updates I've had. Lot of new laws, the passing of the target copy, the only law that you can report concealed by. 4603, Texas Penal Code, already prohibits weapons inside government chambers, so any kind of, or county court, district court, whatever, you can't have any kind of weapon that's collected, what you want to do. There's also a penal code statute, 3066, where trespassing is not allowed, so it's covered. I'm talking to David, he was thinking about this. There's something we have to add in the building, especially since we're a combination building. This one here is municipal, one month, on Thursday at 4:00. Second Monday of the month, 6:00, it's at City Governor's Chamber.
So you can walk around and hear, well, you can walk around with license, I mean, if they can sell gun unless we're having a meeting or if they're having a court, basically.
My recommendation, Council, would be, there's a need, open court, if there's a need going on here, subject to the open, open, I think firearms should be prohibited. Reason why is because whoever's behind that, what do y'all call that?
Dias.
What is it?
Dias.
Dias?
Dias.
Dias, yes, that works. Well, people, if they're coming, shouldn't have to worry about the guy that's out there packing heat. Shouldn't have to worry about it. You shouldn't be persuaded by somebody that may be out there with a weapon. Try doing today, try doing today, that's not the way a democracy should work, in my opinion. Y'all got different opinions, by all means, but I think court, in any kind of meeting that's subject to open meetings, I think should be prohibited.
And that was the attorney's recommendation.
For us to do that, we have to have certain signings, English and Spanish, before we post it on this room, and because where Beth Tricia says, more gaps in parks there, that's also a court park, that probably is a court, stuff, fines you pay and all that, that's prohibited, period. So a sign needs to be posted on that door, keeping weapons of lots of soldiers out, we need to have a temporary sign, we can take them down, put out here.
Why couldn't we just put a sign at the front door, one on the back door, permanent, that you can't carry a concealed handgun in the building at all?
Because there's public areas where you can.
Well, but you still have.
No way.
In other words, you can, in other words, you can walk in that hallway all you want to do, saying anybody can say.
So we cannot, as a city, say, no, you cannot.
You can, but the Attorney General's going to be not putting.
Yeah, there's numerous, there's numerous cities and counties out there requesting Attorney General's opinions on how this is going to go, because it's one of those things, nobody knows until the state can test it.
Right, so like, I know you can't, you can't carry it inside of a courthouse, but you can carry it outside the courthouse.
Right.
So it's like that.
Just like, just like.
Right.
You can't have, vote for Joe Schmo out here within 100 feet, you can have it 102 feet.
Right.
It's the same thing, you know, it's just parameters. I, I think we need to have it posted to keep them out of this room, whenever there's stuff going on in this room, it's all in the law. Hallway, I think.
From office.
From office. If you have, if you have a license over, want to come in here and have a meeting with you, I think we have a hard time keeping out of your office.
But notice your sign says prohibited concealed handgun. That's a carry.
Yeah.
You can't say it, because they can.
Yep.
It's concealed.
Right, it's not open carry.
So to me, sign that works, man, is pretty, you can still have an open carry, just not a concealed carry.
We could do about a guy who wants to run shotgun.
Exactly. Watch it.
Duck.
That's all you can do.
I'll be down here.
Aren't they supposed to?
Check it at the door.
Give him the floor.
There's not deer around here, is there? So your sign.
We're going to get crowded trying to get out this door. It's very, it's very probably involved, again, there's probably going to be some, I, I know I've talked to some jurisdictions that are already planning on, you know, having some constitutional carry folks, and a lot of them, and I'm, I'm all about set them in, so don't take this wrong, but all this constitutional carry folks you hear about, but the ones that can't get a license to begin with, so they, Constitution says they can, but that's fine, you have the right, if you lost that right, you have to, that's gone.
The more you try to take away from them, the more they're going to try to test the water, you know?
Exactly, and that's.
Exactly. So I think, just think we do deal just between now and then, where, again, hope for the best, myself.
Well, basically, Chief, you agree with the attorney's recommendation, you and him agree, basically.
We can do what we can to keep, keep it alive.
So are they, aren't they fixing to pass that open carry?
It's passed.
I did.
January 1.
It takes effect in January.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
So.
So wouldn't that like make all this for not?
No.
If I could just walk in here.
It'd be concealed.
This is still.
Oh, so, okay.
In response to.
Okay, I'm with you now.
Yeah.
So even though it would be illegal to have in the hall, they cannot bring it in here, and that would stand, right, okay, I'm good with that.
Door.
For sure, for sure.
And just wait.
Still want to be sitting here.
They're shutting the door then, too.
I just don't want to sit here. I just don't want to sit here, having to walk into one of the guns.
I'm going to start barring your body shield.
Is this just plywood?
Make some iron there.
Doesn't matter, I'm going to start barring his shield.
Make some bulletproof. It's iron, stick around the front.
Of course, it's plywood.
Not yet.
I know it.
Water got cut.
But see, that part does, because I'm liking.
Sign is not being.
I know it.
It's really changed.
You got to check yours.
I know it.
To where we putting signs?
Court office, the park office, here.
On the window?
On the window. And that will be permanently posted, going through a period, that's what we call it, court records, kept here, has to be a temporary sign, goes up and down whenever we're having, gets posted whenever we're having court, in any kind of meeting, subject to the whole.
Who's in charge of the posting temporary sign?
When we put up signs, whatever.
Now, they can't bring a concealed gun into your office, can they? They can't?
Yeah.
I don't know. Like hospitals, you can't, I mean, there's all kinds of lists. They're court schooled, and any, any place that has, any place that has fifty-one on the door.
You've got to remember about this open carry thing. How many concealed handgun licenses, we all know? We all know a bunch. We all do. How many of you carry a gun all the time?
Two or three, right.
How many of you actually carry it on a person?
Nowadays, all of them.
Some do, some don't.
You read paper today, move.
I know something to do.
I predict this, given about six months, and these people that got, when I bought their thousand dollar, nice sounding pretty handgun, they want to carry it on their head, because you have to carry it two ways. Belt holster, or shoulder holster, just can't have it anywhere. And they're going to realize that that's a pain.
Put a sleep belt on.
Yes. She tells me, and shoulder holster, it'd be just as bad, I think.
Are you talking about open carry?
It's, it's a responsibility, and it was looking at you, doing a lot of that. I think about six months, news going to wear off that old thing, and you got a bunch of license owners out there not carrying it. Are they going to go back to the way it was?
Concealed.
Concealed.
Exactly.
Which is the way it should be.
Right.
Texas has the perfect gap in between. That's, that's my recommendation, permanently posted on the park's office here, check rate posting out here.
So you need a motion to buy some signs.
Put them up there.
Mayor, I make a. A motion that we adopt the attorney's, our city attorney's recommendation and our chief police recommendation to install two signs at City Hall, one for court, according to the attached memo in item three, and then one for council and other city meetings, and of course, refer to the attached memo, photo, and the sign in the recommendation from the city attorney. I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Jordan, seconded by Councilmember McCarthy, to accept the recommendation of Chief Matt Birch on the signage for the concealed handgun license in governmental meeting. And the attorney also recommended the same thing. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Move to item E, purchase of new body armor in the amount of five thousand one hundred thirty-three dollars for six vests with the BVP grant covering fifty percent of the cost.
You see the packet, information on the body armor. Grant special. Money for the budget for, for this. That amount should cover the cost of six, six vests. It's just on the invoice, check written. Six vests, and then getting grant coverage.
Where do we have the grant money in on that, or is it still funding?
Yeah.
So they buying that?
Actually, once I order, I don't even have to receive this, once I ordered this, I can see it in the first person. I think the way they usually require, is we'll be sent to.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion with purchase, for the purchase of new body armor, six, in the amount of fifty-one hundred and thirty-three dollars for six vests, and with half of that being from the BVP grant covering the fifty percent. So we're paid all upfront, we're getting rid of it.
And maybe if you get, like I said, it's going to take a purchase order, they don't have to have an invoice.
What do you do with your own one?
Can tell you that.
We're trying to decide. Because I can't, I can't auction.
Can we put them around the front?
No, we want to remodel it for the front.
Put a motor in?
We're talking about that.
He shoots like, rock and land, I'm going to be the first one.
I second.
We have a motion by Councilmember McCarthy, seconded by Councilmember Thomas, to, for the purchase of new body armor in the amount of five thousand one hundred thirty-three dollars for six vests, with the BVP grant is going to reimburse the city for fifty percent of the cost. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item F, crime control purchase of five body cameras for L3 Mobile Vision at a cost of two thousand five hundred twenty dollars.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion with approval, item L, the purchase of five body cameras is approved by the rail crime control prevention district board earlier, for the purchase of five body cameras from L3 Mobile, for a cost of twenty-five hundred and twenty dollars.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilmember McCarthy, seconded by Councilmember Thomas, to, for the crime control purchase of five body cameras from L3 Mobile Vision at a cost of two thousand five hundred twenty dollars. All in favor?
Aye.
Item G, crime control purchase of tasers from Taser International at a cost of three thousand two hundred dollars. Cost will cover three tasers, holsters, and data port download kit.
Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm ready that we go ahead and purchase tasers from Taser International at a cost of three thousand two hundred dollars for three tasers, holsters, and data port download kits.
Mr. Mayor, the, the board approved thirty-one fifty-nine.
No, thirty-one fifty-nine fifty.
Okay, I have a second.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Thomas to approve for the purchase of tasers from Taser International at a cost of three thousand one hundred fifty-nine dollars and fifty cent, seconded by Councilmember Jordan. All in favor? Item H, change the date and time of regular crime control, Reno Crime Control Prevention, Crime Prevention Meeting in time for, meeting time for, from the third Monday each month at six P M. to the second Monday each month at five thirty P M. before each council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, in coordination with the regular city council meeting, the board approved to change the date and time of the regular Reno Crime Control Prevention District meeting time from the third Monday each month, at six, to the second Monday each month at five thirty. I make a motion and file that as approved by the board.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember McCarthy to move the crime control meeting to the second Monday each month to have it before the regular city council meeting, seconded by Councilmember Brandon Burke. All in favor? Item I, purchase of a generator for the city hall.
I've got a bunch of questions. Yes. I got a bunch of items.
Who, all right, first of all, who are we talking about? That, you know, that says he thinks it will be fifty-five hundred?
The governor, Robert Lopez, that manages the federal surplus property.
Got all the hours on.
Was not auctioned yet. It's stuff that gets passed down, they tried to resell it. Got a very, very good rate. Nobody else wants it after a period of time. These generators, I cold called it the other day, said, hey, what you got? Sometimes they're, they have a website where they post up, they put some pictures. A lot of the stuff they have on there.
Right.
It's been used, used, you can imagine.
Is it military, is her most of?
Some of it is, some of it isn't. Most of it's military, some of it comes from other federal agencies, they're getting rid of. Those three generators, I've attached around pictures on right there, came from military. Those have never been deployed anywhere from stateside. He says they either came from Mexico or Arizona. They've never really seen much out of them. They've never been pretty disturbed. They've been tested.
And they've only got like, just a few hours, six, eight, twenty, twelve, that's nothing.
The other.
Twelve hours.
Found out why they, those generators, all made rebuild engines in them, that's okay.
So there's no warmth here?
There's no warmth, you're getting it as is. The original engines in them were John Deere diesel engines. I checked with Ag Power, called the guy back and forth, he got some tags on the engine blocks, sort of model numbers, serial numbers, stuff like that. The guy at Ag Power, the service man at Ag Power, is pretty confident without seeing it, he's going off with some pictures I'm sending, he's pretty confident that he can prepare it. If something does go wrong, what that'll be, I have no idea.
Now, are they natural gas?
Diesel.
They are diesel.
What's the cost of a new sixty kilowatt generator?
Probably, guess, talk to the Argus, as much I have about it, because they have not seen any hard numbers yet. You can probably start around twenty thousand dollars, just for the generators, that's not counting switch, that's not counting installation. They have a hundred twenty.
Hundred twenty? We talked about this a few months ago, a generator. Now, I think they have some paperwork from Argus, didn't they?
Well, this was for the water tower, it was a small generator, it runs a whole range, it's an eleven K W generator. It'll run one hundred, two hundred, thirty, water power, all the components on it, to run that repeater, it's a powerful generator. This, a sixty K W of Ford and Argus, should run everything in the building, including H V A C, everything.
Do you have any kind of estimate on what it would take to, or, no, how much it would cost for him to hook it up?
He doesn't know.
See, that's.
That's the big, that's the big problem, me too.
It's not just plugging extension cords.
Right, and also, those generators don't have any cables with any, okay, also, Argus doesn't seem to be, they have any problem getting the cables, it's just.
Oh, he can do it.
You have to buy them and put them together and pay somebody to do all that. He thinks, again, he hasn't sent me numbers yet, he thinks we could get a twenty-two K W new generator with a five year warranty, and you know somebody can fix it if it breaks. It wouldn't run everything in the building, but it would run all your major systems, your computer networks.
All your one ten stuff.
Your phone system, your alarm systems, fire systems, some one ten rugs, some backup lights, it would run what you needed, except for heating air.
Heating air, so.
You need a heating air, you plug in a fan, you plug in a space heater, you go on by. He thinks we can get a new one for about as much money as that would take to buy that one and get that one up and running and hooked up.
Fifty-five hundred.
He hasn't sent me any yet, he was going to today, and then he texted me and said, hey, something's come up, I got to go, talk to you tomorrow, so.
So we're just kind of waiting for an estimate from him, more or less, kind of?
Right, if we want to go the new route, if we want to go and jump into that, which tempting, and that's why I'm bringing it to you, it's very, very tempting, because you're not going to buy a U two generator with that, that light in that kind of division, fifty-five hundred.
Twelve hours on it.
You're not going.
I was looking at buying a Honda not too long back, that big, and it was forty-one hundred.
Yeah, one we put in water tower was. It was about forty-five. It was.
So y'all pick it up?
Really good, yeah.
I know one thing, though, that if you have a, a backup generator, it's normally always best to go with like a natural gas one, because if it, if it sits for a year, or for a year and a half, or for two years, by the time that you do need it, then the carburetor's messed up, and it, it might not crank.
And that's what scares me about something like that. You're, you're going to propose it to me, okay, you're going to spend a minimum eight thousand dollars just to say, by the time you pour slab, put a fence around it, because it will be secure, pay somebody to hook it up, okay, you're going to spend a chunk to have a twenty-two year old generator sit there and wait for the next power outage.
Right.
Now, I've, now, the places I've been around that has these generators, yours may be like it too, it's a power plant, you can set them where they kick on and test every week, so your carburetor will be, I mean, they run for how long?
Diesel's not going to have any effect on the carburetor.
Right.
How long is yours running?
Thirty minutes, constantly.
Yeah. Now, you have to.
Now, okay, that's something like that.
Diesel can sit there for years, and the fuel will be all right.
Yeah.
Now, you definitely, my plan would be whatever we did, if obviously we bought a new one, it would be on automatic exercise.
And that's what you would want it to do.
This one here, we go, we do sirens testing once a month.
Exactly, and let it run for.
Let it run for a few things, kill it again.
What's the maintenance cost on yours here, at the plant, other than fuel?
Just filters, maintenance.
Can use diesel?
Yes, it's there. No, 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 filters, no filters, nothing.
Chief, a new one, potential new one, the twenty thousand dollar one you talked about.
Twenty-two K W.
Is it natural gas or diesel?
The ones, the ones he thinks we should get would be propane, natural gas.
Propane gas, yeah.
And it'd be something, and I think there's a natural gas one out here.
It is, it's a meter right back there.
Yeah, right. So what Argus would propose to do, is put it right on about coal to feed the building.
And feed both buildings? Or feed just this one?
Feed this one.
But I would like, I mean, this is just me, I would like, if that sixty would run this whole building, where y'all don't lose a thing.
No, that's the thing.
I mean, I would.
We don't want to go through another milestone up here.
Don't say that word.
Yeah, it was, I mean, it's twenty fifteen, we need to have some kind of backup power supply, we need to function. We, we need to do something. This is something I didn't budget for, because what I was proposing, I knew, was going to be this and that some. Might be able to get by with a little, a lesser job to do what we need to do, unless y'all still want to do this. I'm, I'm, I'm needing some help, because we need that, problem I think we need to solve.
I mean, for this one, I mean, I don't know much about mechanics of.
I know a lot about generators, a whole lot, and I know those, those generators right there would be here for a long time. Oh, my God, yeah. No more than you'd use, it would be.
Is that what's still sitting, your old one's still sitting over there?
No, it's still, it's okay. No, it's still, it's okay.
What, you remember what it run? And that was a old, old. We had talked about, I mean.
It was twenty years, twenty-five years ago.
Yeah.
So if this generator is like fifty-five hundred, five thousand.
And Mr. Lopez told me he'd hold for a hundred fifty-five, that's all he's gonna deal with.
So we're looking at with the cables, with the connection and everything, another fifteen, twenty thousand dollars?
No.
Well, no, I think the cables.
A switch are gonna cost about.
About thousands.
You can get them, you can get a real high-end switch for seven hundred dollars.
Right. I think Argus said seven, seven to a thousand, if they know what you need. He didn't know because he was guessing.
They'll go after bid. The install of this could go after bid.
And he may not have to force life either, might be a deal where you put ground out.
Is yours on copper yet or how long copper is that?
Yeah.
How to?
How, how loud? I mean, if you're in here working and that thing's operating, you're two days.
It would be very loud.
It wouldn't be that loud.
Because that's what I'm wondering.
Well, we wouldn't.
Plus, in here trying to work.
Twenty-four hours a day, well, very good.
It would be like a.
We have multi-day hours.
Be about like a Dodge truck out there running in the parking lot.
Yeah.
Just had to idle.
Maybe a little less because a lot of those boxes that they put the stuff in.
Muffle them down, too.
Well, it'd sound just like a tractor sitting out there running, is what it would sound like.
We gotta wait.
But how, how.
Get it out. My gosh.
No break.
Well, I know.
So.
Hold on.
That's always in there.
It's in there, but it's reading.
So we're looking at then, if, say, connected, installed, cables and all, what, ten, twelve thousand dollars possibly? We don't know, you know, just what the possibility is. But basically, half of what a new one's gonna cost.
For a big old generator.
Yeah. A lesser, a newer lesser generator.
Yeah, if, if we bought a new one, I would suggest that. Would I wipe it from the whole building? Yes, isn't necessary to run heating air.
Choo-choo.
Well, I.
In my house, that's why I would want it running.
Yeah, I put it this way, if it's, if it's summertime and you need the air, the generator's not gonna run long enough because they're gonna get it repaired. The only, what you have to really worry about is like ice storms.
Winter time.
So running the heat. But the thing is, is.
Or they shut it off because of blackout.
Let, let's put it this way, if, if it is an ice storm.
Blackout, they'll shut, they'll shut you out like they do place over here.
If, if it is an ice storm, though, you, you gotta look at it like this, too. Almost probably every day, you're gonna have to go out there and fill it up.
Oh, yeah.
So if it's, if it's ten or fifteen days, you're gonna be out there filling it up every day. Where it's like. Right. But if you had a natural gas, it'll run twenty-four, seven and just.
Yeah, I agree.
And that's, that's the big upside.
It's gonna freeze it. You're gonna be cold because it's not gonna run your heat space.
Worst case scenario, propane, you had propane guy come out and fill it once a week.
Right.
When you guys were out there, you have somebody, that's pretty much what they do and just keep holding these alive.
And see, so no telling what one of these would burn.
Is, what's the potential in, in this being sold in the next few years?
He told me, he, he plans on getting those posted, he hopes for next day. And he told me that he would anticipate as, as good a shape as they're in, it'd go quickly, probably the same day. He said he'll probably get calls as soon as they're posted online. They have, there's jurisdictions that you've got to watch.
And companies, there's, you know, most of your cell phone towers are going to, generators, keep those up, they're gonna power out. You've got, and most of you, all your utilities, phone, hubs, they run generators. That price, I don't know generator prices, but what I've been told.
Oh, that's, that's nothing. I can put it, that, that's nothing. This is.
That's thirteen.
This right here, these, these machines.
That's a problem.
I would probably take a guess that each one of these would probably at least seventy thousand, sixty thousand.
How big of a generator?
Yeah.
And I just like.
If you were to buy one now.
That they'll be able to come to work and be comfortable. I mean, business as usual.
Well, the thing is, if you do buy it, you can get your money back out of it, I'm sure.
Okay, you gotta fill it up twice a day, you're still doing good, you got all your business.
That's the only, that's the only downside I have is that, is the maintenance side.
That's my big deal, too.
It's just, it's just keeping it, keeping it running when it has to run.
But it was, I couldn't, I couldn't let it go without telling you all about it. That was my whole thing. Because you very rarely, you know, with military surplus program, where you pay nothing for the equipment? You're not gonna find a piece of equipment like that on that, no way. The federal surplus program, which is a lot, is the, the natural stuff that they sell to you. Still, very seldom you see something like that. It was one of the things that I was, it was too nice to not tell you about and see.
City Hall Paris, do they have a backup generator? Do you know?
Numerous.
Numerous. And I guess they're propane or natural gas.
Sure, being right there.
It's diesel, aren't they? They have a enormous tank out there.
Yeah, and it's diesel?
Yeah, it's diesel, but I mean, they got a tank out there that probably run it for a couple of days at least.
Police station?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, they set it, they'll set a different pole over to probably do the new building, wouldn't they? So why couldn't you put the generator over by the yard? Come over by that pole and sit out here by the people, put it kinda out of.
If there's another way to do it.
Because they're gonna have to have. Well, I could maybe be security in their fence and then just bring, drop over here.
Y'all mentioned the external, is there an external fuel tank you can get for these?
The one at the PD, I don't know what gallon it is I can find out, but I, I bet there's probably some other, yeah, it's enormous.
Yeah, there's, I think, there's some.
That would be a good way to go, instead of going out there with a funnel.
If we had it out there, because they have a fuel tank out here that has diesel in the yard already. So if it was housed out there, then they could just fill it, you know, keep it full all the time.
Well, these things will probably hold, I bet you a hundred and fifty, two hundred gallons.
But if it's sucking eight hours a gallon.
Is it three hundred?
Yeah.
Yeah. And say, something like that, you, you would have to get like blanket shift to come fill it up.
Yeah, but it's gonna be, it's close to five a year.
Yeah, they'll pull up their truck.
Because we have diesel out in the yard that they, and the big tank, and that's blanket shift.
So if we did.
They haul it out there to the plant.
If we did decide to buy this, what would we, how would we budget it?
Just put a line item in the budget right now, so the budget would be just not balanced, but then by the end of the year.
Until later than.
It would, you would hope that, yeah.
Okay.
Will you system fund it by then? Does it run in the water service? Will you system money to buy this?
Yeah, yeah, it'd be running the kiosk.
And run the kiosk.
It's running the kiosk.
System to get the meter read.
So he said, could he?
Internet read war maker system.
See there, that's what I'm saying.
And could we tie, would you think it would run his building too, tie in the public works?
I, oh, I promise you it would.
Could you tie, he probably.
Yeah, I promise you it would.
Tie up everything. This is a huge generator.
I mean, a six, what is it, sixty?
What did you say about the system?
Yeah, sixty kilowatt, I made that.
Yeah, you'll be, oh, yeah, sure you will.
My plan is, is to take the day, go down there, we call him in the morning, let him know that we're not handling it. Get you all proof.
So which one?
And then go down there and, and crank it, crank one of them, make sure it's on.
So this day is tomorrow, if he's gonna post them Wednesday?
Well, if he puts his name on it.
Well, he'll hold it.
Where are they?
Four.
Yeah, because they're not done four either.
Yes, there's, there's three.
Oh, we can paint it whatever color we want. Don't care for the pink.
So you can get down there and look at it and make sure everything's good to go? Hopefully, and we can blame you if it turns out to be a bad.
We're all the same, that was just turned backwards.
Right.
The one that moved, basically, ups and downs.
Now, I think they're same diameter, same big, same volume. One's at twelve hours, one's at eight, one's at five or six. They both got rebuilt engines in twenty fifteen.
I say buy it because you can't go wrong.
That's right.
We don't need to repeat it two years ago. I said, we don't need to repeat it two years ago.
They're not calling for a very nice winter this year.
That's what, yeah.
Cold and wet, yeah.
I'll go for the snow, just no ice, no ice.
Yeah, snow and no ice.
So does somebody say this probably wouldn't be enough to run a new building, too?
I know it will.
Yeah, it'd be enough to run everything from here to the car wash.
That thing and wiring, that thing would pull a lot.
It would be, I guess, just pockets out, just area.
It'd run Walmart, easy. Or it would run Walmart.
Think it would.
Yeah.
Did you see what they put in Walmart, West Alamo?
I know, well, that's, just to make sure, but that's, at max, that would probably run it, sixty kilowatts. That may is. That's a lot. Yeah, it is. Aren't they saying? You can, you can set it from single to. But it will go single, I mean, not, because it's not, it's not just three phase all the time.
At the time you do all that, it's gone.
Okay. Yeah, because if you get, if it just runs three phase, then.
So do you want us to go ahead and approve the purchase of this fifty-five hundred dollars? Before you go look at it or would you, would you just do? If you, if it's okay, you want some kind of.
If it's, if it's okay, if it's something we wanna get, I wanna have to go and do it because.
Are you gonna take anybody with you that knows it?
Yeah.
I'm gonna look at it. That's about all I can do, it's green, it's starched.
That's the thing that he knows.
Does he know about that?
You don't always smarten it.
But it.
Because he's gonna hold you to it.
Well, we're gonna blame you.
If we do approve it, is he gonna honor that fifty-five hundred, he's gonna say, oh, no, it's gonna be six? Okay.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'd like a motion that we approve up to fifty-five hundred dollars for the purchase of a generator for City Hall. That's how we need it.
A second?
After a second.
Yeah, I'll second it. Go ahead.
What do we do about installation?
Installation?
Once you find out all that information, then have to come.
Call the deeds if you wanna do that.
My, my best case scenario is go down there, it's great, it's what we want, go approve it, it's buy it. It ain't gonna happen, we need some discipline when you get hooked up. There's a lot of characters that say it's gonna be fifty-nine dollars.
Can you go get it? I mean, is that?
You have to take your new trailer and go down there and get it.
All right.
He won't deliver, so we've got to get it.
Where's the set first?
Fort Worth. Utah.
I mean, really, well, would that, would that be, would this fit on your trailer? Without violating D O T stuff or following through, following through your new trailer and the fall?
It's a heavy thing.
Okay.
A second? You all in?
Yeah.
We have a motion to purchase of a generator for City Hall by Councilmember McCarthy, seconded by Councilmember Thomas. An amount of five thousand five hundred dollars. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Move to Adam K, update on Keep Reno Beautiful and the Twenty-Sixteen Great American Cleanup.
Mayor, I still have that put on there. We have some things coming up. I just wanted to update the city. Keep Reno Beautiful's been working very hard on beautification projects, including the planting and maintaining of trees and flowers at the park and on the trail. What we're doing, our overall goal with the trees on the trail is we're planting flowering trees plus different maples. We're trying to make it where during spring and fall, it's an absolute amazing view when people wanna come to our trail. We have raised awareness on litter prevention and have held two trash-off events. We hold a membership with Arbor Day Foundation and are expecting more flowering trees for the trail to be delivered within the next two weeks. Ratcher's Nursery has donated some of the native flowers that we need to be eligible for the Bring Back the Monarchs Texas Grant. We're really hoping for that. It's been established to restore monarch butterfly habitats and it'll help supply the flowers for the trail and the park. We're now preparing our application for the Governor's Community Achievement Award, which if awarded, would provide a hundred and ten thousand dollars for the city of Reno for further beautification and community improvement efforts.
There we go.
Wish us luck on that, I'm gonna put a lot of time into that one. On the Keep Reno Beautiful Trash Off in October, we were able to remove an estimated three hundred and forty pounds of trash from Reno's roadways. We'll be having our next Don't Mess with Texas Trash Off on April ninth, two thousand sixteen. This is gonna be in line with the Texas Signature Event of the Nationwide Great American Cleanup. Reno's Kiwanis Club has expressed interest in helping us with this event, so we're expecting this one to be pretty big. And we're requesting that the city consider scheduling the city's spring cleanup for the same weekend. So we wanna make this one big. Every time we do a trash-off, that goes towards this Governor's Award and we can, we can apply for that every year. So, and you can receive it, I think, up to three times within like a ten-year period, so.
You can receive the grant three times?
Mm-hmm.
Wow, dang.
Like I said, for a city our size, it's a hundred and ten thousand dollars. So efforts are very little worth it. And I'm very excited that Kiwanis is teaming up with us for these trash-offs because they're really gonna help us promote it and make it really big deal for the city. That's just an update, if we can have the spring cleanup aligned with that and we can go ahead and start preparing for this.
April ninth, April ninth, that weekend.
Saturday.
That works.
Not usually right in there, same, I mean, real close.
Appreciate that report.
Yeah, thank you.
Very well, yeah.
Thank y'all for everybody's help with all this.
I've noticed your work you done down there, it looks real nice.
Thank you so much.
A lot of people that comment on it sometimes, don't you guys have a letter?
Oh, we are, we are.
Hey, you got mention in the good letter.
That means a lot to us, too. It really does. It's gonna be pretty, when we get through, it's gonna take time with the trees and everything, but we're gonna have the reds, the yellows, the whites, it's gonna be a sight-winded outfit.
Move to Adam L.
Appreciate your work on it.
Thank you.
Appointment of members to the Parks and Trail Committee.
Mayor, I, I would like to appoint Amanda Willowes to the Park and Trail Committee in light of all her work and her knowledge and her commitment to it.
Mayor, I'm gonna appoint Kerry Dees to vote the trail and the cemetery.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to appoint Slane Thomas to the Parks and Trail.
Is it three?
Why everybody points?
Is the Bailey Clark, Joe, you had mentioned Bailey Clark, she's still interested in that. All right, Mr. Mayor, I'd move to appoint Bailey Clark to the Parks and Cemetery Committee, Bailey, B-A-I-L-E-E, is that correct?
Parks, P-A-R-K-S.
Clark.
Oh, Clark.
Oh, okay, Clark, I'm sorry, yeah.
To the Parks and Trails.
Yeah, we're doing, yeah, we're doing the parks first, so let's just.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
And I'd like to appoint Terry Webster.
Terry, T-E-R-Y, male.
T-E-R-R-I, Terry Webster. She's from Reno, Kiwanis.
Is this nominating people or what?
No, you just appoint somebody, each person appoints one person.
I'm gonna nominate Jeff Hill.
Everybody will send their nominated person or their appointed person information in so we can get ahold of them?
Okay.
Did we give six, because I have no.
Yeah, we got six.
We'll move to item M, Appointment of Members to the Cemetery Committee.
Mayor, I'd like to appoint Tiffany Davis to the Cemetery Committee.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to point Shalane Thomas to the.
Who is it?
Shalane, Shay Thomas.
Shay.
To the cemetery here.
Tiffany Davis?
Tiffany Davis, yeah.
Mayor, I'm gonna point Carrie Dees for the Cemetery Committee.
Mayor, I'd like to appoint Rick Jordan to the Cemetery Committee.
And I got a council person's spouse sitting on one of these things, and I'll appoint my spouse, Lisa, same last name, most of the time.
I'm gonna nominate Jeff Hill. He don't know, he, I'm gonna need some police protection. Item X. Item ten. Consent item, discuss take action on A, twenty-fif, twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen fiscal year and budget amendments. Item B, monthly deals and purchase orders for October twenty fifteen. Item C, minutes for October twenty fifteen city council meetings. D, financial update as of October thirty-first, twenty fifteen. E, monthly activity reports for October twenty fifteen from Police Department, Public Works Department, Reno Volunteer Fire Department.
Had everything worked out on the budget amendments, right?
Yeah, the budget amendments did not change any division, so if it was in the Police Department, Stolen Department, and all Public Works, if it was in Water, some Water Sewers, Sewer, everything, they just prepared, cleaned up for. And the officers will be here the thirtieth.
The thirtieth? How long is that gonna take?
We'll be here the thirtieth first and second, and hopefully that'll be it, but if not, then we'll be back the next week. We got our four pages of things to get ready for on today, so.
Joy.
So you'll be receiving letters in the mail, and please mail those back.
First request, but second and third request, the first request.
Please, you'll be receiving something from our officers in the mail, please mail it back. Don't just think it's junk mail and throw it off the side, please.
Mayor, I move that we approve items ten, A through E, and subsections one, two, and three.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve item A through E and subsections one through three, seconded by Councilmember Thomas. All in favor? This meeting is adjourned, seven twenty PM.